Okay, good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission and it's March 30th of 2023. Let's begin our meeting tonight with the pledges, pledge of allegiance. And Dana, if you would lead us in that, be greatly appreciated.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Okay, thank you. Sorry that I'm calling in from home tonight. Been exposed to COVID for the last couple of weeks at work through various players. So I'm just going to play it safe and not try to spread it around anymore. So this makes it a little more difficult to chair. I can see, you know, Andy and Mary Beth really well, but not so well with you in the room. So if, when you have something to say, if you wouldn't mind raising your hand, yeah, that might make it a little bit easier. So first thing on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda. This is Dana.
I'll second it, Howard.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, down to public comment. Is there anyone in the room from the public?
No, there is no one from the public here.
Okay. Going down to new business, we don't really have any new business tonight. So we'll flip right down to old business. And the first thing on the agenda in that part is the short-term rentals ordinance. And I, I believe Bill has gotten some comments since the last meeting. And all of those have been incorporated, right, Bill?
They have.
Okay. And so if we're, if we'll have, let's open it up if there are any more comments on that. And then we'll try to figure out when we should have a public meeting on this. So anybody else have anything to say about the short-term rentals ordinance?
Is this? All right, if I go?
Oh, there you go. Right in front of my eyes.
No. Um, I don't know how relevant it is, but um, the Brave Little State, which is a program of Vermont Public, they used to be Vermont Public Radio, um, put out a podcast about short-term rentals in Vermont. Um, I just listened to it last night and it was really interesting. So maybe I'll send you guys the link if you're interested through email. But it went, they talked to a lot of like neighboring landowners of Airbnbs and owners of Airbnbs and you know, people have taken surveys in different towns and they've looked at the regulations and um, I think it's just really relevant to what we're doing in general, kind of interesting. Um, I'm interested to see what the public meetings, like what, what people think? If you know, the public has an, you know, opinion in Rutland Town. But I think in the meantime, if you listen to that, be helpful just in thinking about the issue in a bigger picture.
Okay, yeah, do share that link. That would be great. Was there any kind of point of view from the podcast? Did it take a, any perspective?
Yeah, I'd say one of the, the main points that they had was that, well, some towns are, you know, regulating, restricting, but most towns like we know are, have a registration. Like they're trying to find out, you know, what the statistics are and people that are renting out. And um, you know, whether it is taking, um, you know, homes off the market that would otherwise be like long-term rentals for like employees. And um, and it kind of varied by town. Um, but I think in general, most towns in Vermont are kind of taking the, let's register and just see what it's like in our town. And then um, decide if we want to do something different based on that and based on like public feedback and.
Okay, okay. Um, how about the tone of the latest draft? Um, does it strike a better balance between what we're trying to do? And, and you know, what businesspeople or you know, residents trying to run a small business are doing? Has that improved, Howard?
I'd say it's, this thing looks like it's going to be a real challenge for anybody that wants to get into it. Plus a real challenge in a town of Rutland. This is, this is a, gonna be quite a project. There's a lot to it.
And the challenge to the town is, is what, do you think?
To follow up, to follow up and enforce it to, there's somebody who's gonna be, somebody gotta be pretty involved to do that. I would say. It's not gonna, not gonna just flow like, like you would like it to. Because people are gonna try to bend the rules and you name it, but.
So, so I had, I had a meeting earlier this, earlier this week, or I've had, I've had several with uh, some different vendors that offer various levels of service for helping municipalities with this, anywhere from just the most basic. We'll help you identify the ones in your community to managing basically the entire system for you. So the one that managed the entire system for you was like a Killington level package, which was like $27,000 a year, which we're not going to even touch that. The one that I'm leaning most towards is one that helps us identify the properties. We have, we have about 30 is what, what we, what I've been able to term, we have about 30, which is, which is not really a big number. And they would help us in terms of, they would check, uh, there's roughly 25 different websites where people can advertise their properties. They would check every website every week and report back to us on changes. So if somebody's putting them on, taking them off, putting them on, taking them off, trying to get around stuff, it'll get found. So what, you know, and, and I, I put this together fully realizing that it's, it's going to be me for a little while. That's going to be largely responsible for, for this, which is fine. The company that's really just does the basic identification is about $3,000 a year, which is, which we could completely cover by the cost of the fees associated with it. So there'd be no actual cost to taxpayers to manage the program. So that was my goal of going into this is that we, we, I know we're getting some outside help, but I want that outside help to be paid for by the people that are using the program.
And that's the one that you identified that would check the websites and.
Yeah, I've talked to two so far and literally 3,000 or 27,000. So I'm, I'm wanting to talk to one more, but there's really not that many of them that do this. So um, and I'm, I'm leaning toward this one, that's, that's about 3,000. It's, it's really good. And there's actually some other services they offer that can help us. So there, it's a pretty neat little, neat little company. But um, that's, that's part of what they do. And they can do the whole managing the system for us, but we don't, we're not, we're not that level.
Right.
You know, you know, they, everybody kind of agreed like, once you pass like, once you get to around 50 to 75, it gets a little more difficult to manage. But this reporting helps with that. So, you know.
It's a good place to start since it's relatively.
It's a, it's, it's the annual contract. So if we decide after a year it's not working, we're not, you know, we're, we're, we're only going to be responsible for $3,000, which is really not. And, and the intent is that again, these fees cover that. So.
Right.
I disagree that there's gonna be a lot to this. So I, I, I don't. So I'm hoping that we can kind of get in, in, involved with this company in June or July. So they can, we can have a database of these properties built. So by the time the ordinance takes effect on day one, I already know who's, who needs to be in that system.
And if our public meeting works out, that, that'll be key right there to see where it's headed.
Are these local companies, Bill?
No.
They would be doing their work remotely?
All, all of them are. They're, they're national companies. One of them, like the one Ken uses GovOS and, and they're, they're a national company. They deal with like, this is part of what they do. Like so, um, the uh, I forget the other company's name is, but yeah, no, these, these are not, these are not local vendors. These are national companies.
Do you know if any of the other towns that have an ordinance similar to the one we're considering, use any of these companies?
Yes, they did. Uh, there's, and some, some of them, a couple of towns use the, the, the low end one. And a couple of towns use the high end one. City uses the high end one. So.
Well, the city has.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Burlington, South Burlington, Chester, Ludlow, Killington. So, yeah.
Okay, okay. Do we think, um, we were shooting for April 20th, which is about three weeks, it's our next meeting, three weeks away. Do we feel, so I, I, I think the plan was, you know, even though this hasn't gone to the town attorney yet and you know, all the polishing touches.
It has, Barbara. He's already got it. He, he's done some preliminary, it looks, looked at it. And we fixed some of the statutory references because the ones I copied from other towns were actually wrong. So. Um, but we fixed, we fixed several of those. Uh, but he has seen it. I talked to him today. He's, there've been other things he's been working on. So he's, uh, he's gonna go, he's gonna look at it again, but, but he absolutely has seen it and he's, he's had it for about a month.
Okay, that's, that, that's great. I think we were working under the assumption that he wouldn't finalize his work before the 20th, or is that wrong?
It's possible, but probably not likely.
Yeah, yeah. So we're still working under the assumption that we will present a, a real draft to the public and get, get the input on, you know, maybe some possible changes to the language. Or striking of things.
Yeah, the big thing that I, I wanted from him was, was making sure our references are appropriate. Um, and any comments in the language, but you know, he went, he's gone through it and he didn't really have many. So.
Okay, yeah. Um, so the, the question is, even if we're ready, can, do we have enough time to get publicity out there? Can we?
I've got my article for the circle ready. Go to you.
Almost, almost, but it, that's gonna be, that'll come out just before the 20th. Usually it's like three weeks into the month. So it doesn't give people much notice about this. Can we get Bill some prime real estate, real estate on the, the website about this?
Yeah, I know, I know a guy.
And you know, we can do front, front porch forum and, and anything else of the town of Facebook site.
Yep.
So why?
Yeah, Jerry.
So why couldn't we move it to the next meeting? That doesn't work time wise. You know, I'm thinking too, the 20th is, is vacation week for school.
Oh, it starts the 17th, doesn't it?
Yeah, so that's gonna maybe be tough on some people. I don't know, but.
Yeah, we'll be in Florida, just near my parents.
Oh, come on.
Is that not enough time, Bill, or to, or we'd have, we'd have the stuff back from the attorney maybe by the middle of May?
11th, May 11th.
May 11th, I think it was.
Yeah.
That's up to you guys. I mean, that's.
Then we could still put it in the circle for the next, next month and.
And if we put it in the circle then, then people have.
Some time to plan on it.
Right, to plan on it. Yeah, that makes actually.
Any reason we shouldn't do that, maybe?
I can't think of one.
The, the, the public meeting is to allow the public just to kind of get a look at it, which is something we don't normally do. So if we never have a meeting, it wouldn't really change.
Right, where it's going, right.
Yeah.
More polished and made than it would be in.
Yeah. And it would give, it would give more time for announcing it and planning to attend. And it would not conflict with vacations. And so I, I actually think that's a good idea, Jerry.
Yeah, and, and we wouldn't, this is not a formal hearing, so it doesn't have to be warned. And we don't need to put a notice in the newspaper. I guess we could buy an ad if we wanted to. If anybody thinks that's.
I don't think if we put an ad in the paper, we're gonna reach the art, the target, target audience.
Right.
Uh, yeah, or what, or what audience we would be. So.
About a town. Barb?
Yeah, yeah, Norm.
Excuse me, I'm sniffing a little bit. Um, perhaps we could get an article in the Herald that we're considering it. Call Keith Whitcomb and that there'll be a meeting. That will get, get some attention, better than an ad and even better than a notice.
Right.
And.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we could try that.
Plus all the other things, including the website and front page forum and Facebook, I think.
Okay, so we'll go.
There will, there will, will there be a, there will be a formal noticed meeting as well, will there not?
It'll be a regular meeting.
It'll, yes.
Adopt it. It'll be on the, it'll be a, at a board meeting.
No, no.
Yeah.
I know that, but for, do we have to actually have a public meeting for comment?
No, we do for the subdivision ordinance, but not for this one.
Well, why?
Kevin told me we did.
I'm sorry?
Because Kevin told me we did.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I, I'm not quite sure why, Norm. I think it's the nature of the ordinances.
Yeah, because, because it's, it's, it basically follows some of the same rules as zoning ordinance do, like it has for the public hearing. And I think we have to have one, the board has to have one. So.
For the, for the subdivision ordinance.
Yes, yeah. There's, there'd be like a war, a warned time for that meeting. So there's not to be a special meeting. It can be part of another meeting, but we have to warn it for that.
For the subdivision, but not for the.
Not for this, right.
Isn't, isn't the, uh, isn't, isn't it a little different because of the select boards kind of done this? This really isn't us anyway.
Yeah.
So that's why it doesn't need to be warned. I mean, or, or have a meeting for the public. This is really not our deal. From what I understand, this is more the select board asking us for our input only.
Yeah, yeah, we actually asked them if we could have a little more input because I, I thought a public meeting would be, be very helpful in this. So.
I just, I have one more thing to add, Barbara, too, if I could. I did talk to the state electrical inspector and asked him what his take was on the law. And the only thing that I think is a little different that's in here that makes sense is that the 30-day thing, right, Bill? That it's got to be, it's got to be rented for over 30 days before it's considered a public building. Or at least 30 days.
Yeah, if it's.
30 days a year.
Consecutive days.
Right. So I did, I did speak with him and his, his take was absolutely positively any, any home, single-family dwelling or any portion thereof needs to be inspected by the Vermont Department of, of Public Safety if it's rented at all or Airbnb'd at all. However, I said, well, how would that work? Well, would that, if, if somebody, and he said, well, somebody would have to actually call us. In other words, not like the town for everyone. I don't think they have time for it. It's kind of his, was his, uh, so I actually, I actually have a call into GJ Garo just to ask him to clarify it. Maybe next meeting I could fill you in on what he tells me. But, but it, it, I think the 30-day thing is something that the electrical inspector didn't really say to me. So that's probably why this particular senate says a building maybe, may constitute.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm kind of looking at it like it definitely does because that's what I'm told. But I think the 30 days changes how he spoke to me. He didn't really speak to me about 30 days.
Okay.
But it was interesting for him to say it definitely needed to be inspected, but how are you gonna go about doing it? I mean, he kind of was like, didn't really offer any suggestions whatsoever, just kind of dismissed it. So. I'll ask GJ just to kind of maybe clarify that if that's good with everybody and I'll let you know.
That makes sense. Yep.
Yeah, that's great. Um, there's, there's one thing in the tone of the, the purpose. It's, it's really minor, but I think it, it goes to, you know, just what might strikes some people as, as being a little anti-business. And that's, uh, under, you know, under section two, number two. And it's in the second line, replacing against the desire of residents. It's balancing with, you know, balancing the desire of property owners with the desire of residents. I just think it make a little bit of difference is, it doesn't sound like it, but just don't like that word against.
I don't see against.
Paragraph two, second line. Balance the desire of property owners to rent their residential properties to short-term rental guests.
Oh, I see.
With the desire.
I agree.
This is what Barbara wants to change.
Yep.
Okay.
It's, that's a great.
Combative.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. It's, yeah, it. Goes back to the original kind of language that was in there. I think it's kind of a holdover from that. Um, and, and Bill, the definition of occupant on the third page is going to be filled in by.
We don't, I couldn't find one like that made any sense to, to this or so. We, we said we wanted to define that and we wanted to define adverse effect. I, I can't find a legal definition for either one.
Well, well, shouldn't our town attorney have one? Oh, yeah.
Oh. I'll, I'll, I'll keep it on his list.
Okay.
We also use the terms adverse effect and adverse impact, I think somewhat interchangeably.
Yeah.
Yep, that makes sense.
I have just a, a comment on format and Bill in the table of contents, you itemize the pages, but they're not individually numbered.
No, they're not yet.
And.
I know.
Okay.
Because every, when we, when we add, you will think that changes. It's far more complicated to update all the time. So that's just a, an end of it. That's, that's the last thing I do is fix the page.
Okay, just show your work.
I know.
And Bill, along the lines of definitions, we're also waiting on a definition for occupant. Is that correct?
That's what she just said, yeah, was occupant.
Oh, yeah, sorry. So I'll miss that. We were talking about adverse.
We, we, I, I added that after you did that. So yes, we, we are looking for both of them.
Both of those, right.
Okay, so May 11th it is. Let's start the publicity now, Bill.
Yeah.
Um, and I'll, I'll reach out to Keith Whitcomb unless you want to, Bill. I'll, I'll be glad to do it.
It's got, it's got, it's got to interest him. So we'll see what we can do.
Okay, maybe, maybe we tag team. Um, and Mary Beth, uh, yeah, please do send us that link. The podcast. Sounds like great, great background. Okay, anything else on, on this draft? Okay, um, the permit tracking ordinance, remember that? We started work on that quite a while ago. Um, it, it sat in the select board for quite a while. There was a suggested change and it finally came up for action the other night with the select board. Uh, it passed, uh, but just barely. Uh, it was a three to two vote. And the two, I, if I could generalize the two votes against it, it was too much like zoning. Even though some of the other people voting in favor of it pointed out that it was just updating and fixing up what was already on the books. Since when, Bill? Since?
2008.
2008. So by a three to two vote, um, it has passed. And it will be one of our ordinances or it, it's, it's already one of our ordinances. It'll, the, uh, the new one will replace what is existing. So, um, I'm just glad we got some action on that one and can take that off our list. Now down to the subdivision ordinance. And Dana, um, if you can tell us what we need to decide on, I guess be mostly the red items, what you need a decision from us for you to carry on. And if you could, after that, complete, get, you know, get this, uh, in, uh, get a version of this ready that is, that takes care, gets rid of all the other colors and, you know.
Well, uh, Barbara, if, if you're here, you'd have a copy.
I'm sorry?
We have, everybody here has that exact thing on their desk.
Oh, if I was there, okay. Okay.
That was, that was. Surprise people attended a person.
Uh, Bill, Bill and I had, have worked on this over the last, what, week and a half, Bill? I can't even remember now. Um, and what we did, let me just give you a little bit of background, then you can ask any questions that you want. And I, I think that I'm going to address the questions that you started to ask as well as other ones that you may have and that others may have. Uh, Bill and I have two versions. Um, have put together two versions and I think, Bill, you sent out last week, the redlined, um, color-coded version, which is the final version that has all of the changes that have been tracked.
I do have some copies here.
And there are a couple of copies here tonight, uh, if people would like to take one with them. Uh, but everybody has that in their inbox in a digital copy. Uh, Bill has also put together what he's calling a clean copy, which is about three pages short, shorter than the original ordinance. Uh, and, uh, Bill, uh, help correct me. I've seen so many versions that my mind is a little, a little muddled.
Whatever you see, I've seen more.
Well, mine is a little muddled, so I just need a little help. Maybe together we'll get the, the right answer. Uh, Bill has also put together a, a comment version that I believe he's going to send to, uh, our, whichever attorney for, um, review. That does, that doesn't have the color coding in it, right? That's just, that just has, it's basically a clean copy that's been annotated with Bill's comments that he and I have reviewed. So we have oh, a dozen and a half, Bill, maybe, uh, questions or comments uh, for legal interpretation. Uh, two-thirds of those are focused on statutory references if, if that, I'm in the ballpark. The others are on comments that we had that were in red, that we needed additional input on. We had decided at our last meeting or two meetings ago that we would send that to the attorney rather than us spending time trying to figure out what we wanted to do. We would ask for a, a legal opinion and then that will come back to us with any comments. Correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, anytime.
That sounds right.
So uh, what we're, uh, what we have now is the uh, cleaned up version of what it looks like that we are sending to the attorney minus the attorney comments that Bill, uh, has put together. So those are comments that we've already covered. Uh, and they are going, uh, for review. So those are questions and comments and requests for guidance. So this is the final version and I'm sure Bill can send this electronically tonight, after tonight, could be tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, it's a big document just to, um, it, it's good to have it ahead of time. Is, is there anything that we need to decide on or help you and Bill fix up what, what you're sending to the attorney?
So we, we don't think so because, uh, the task from the last meeting was for us to do exactly what, uh, Bill has done, to put a clean copy together. To put a clean copy together. Uh, that might be my fault, uh, in terms of not telling Bill to send it out to the. Uh, planning commission. That may have been a misstep on my part, but. Um, we were talking about so many things that fell off my radar. Um, so you have the final version in your inbox, which is, uh, multi-color coded. And, uh, tomorrow you'll see the, uh, version that will go to the. Uh, that will go to the attorney. Uh, minus the, the comments that, uh, Bill and I have compiled through all of our conversations.
Clean draft.
The clean draft.
Yeah, I told, I told my doctor Kevin today, I told him I would send him. Each, each of the three versions, the original. The one with all of the markups and then the one without any markups.
That's what we have here.
You have, yes. And I have some of the ones with the comments if you, if you want one.
But you're sending, uh, you're, you're sending him the clean version with the comments that you. Shared only with me, is that correct?
Yeah. So there's the one that has like the narrower one that has.
Yes.
I'm gonna send him that too.
Oh, you're gonna send him that as well?
Yeah, so, so he can, he can compare and see.
Right, but there's no difference between the clean version. And the one that has the markup comments that you added.
Right. It's the clean one. Just everything's taken out. It's what it would look like if it went.
Right, depressed. Yeah.
Except it's got a question mark.
Yeah, there was a couple, there was still a couple of things we needed to fix.
Just definition needed.
Yeah, we, we do need a definition. Yeah.
Okay.
And there's an addendum. If you, if you look at, uh, the, uh, table of contents. And that, that is perhaps, uh, the only question this evening, Bill, that we need to ask this, this committee. Uh, because there's an addendum A. Uh, we took out the previous addendum A, which had the. Uh, what is it called? The, um. Road construction, um, diagram. And, uh, Bill has replaced that with. Um, what's, what he's calling regulatory references. And so that's the only question, uh, that Bill needs some clarification on. With respect to what we want to include in that addendum.
Okay, and we've decided that it's going to the town attorney as opposed to the LCT.
I sent an ordinance to VLCT two and a half months ago and I have yet to get acknowledgement. They actually have it. So. Yeah.
Okay, the answer is yes, there. Dana, um, you put in so much work on this. Thank you.
You're welcome. I have to, I have to give Bill a lot of credit. Uh, he's been the one behind the scenes pulling it all together, so.
Yeah, the, yeah, the two of you. There's one thing I think it's still needs before we, you know, have a public meeting, send out, uh, you know, the official draft. And that is a more fleshed out version of the draft changes. You know, ex, you know, explicitly what, what, uh, the most important things are that we changed in it. Not typos and, you know, wrong citations and things like that, but anything that was. Uh, probably anything that was, uh, redacted, taken out. Um, ju- just to help people, um. Just to wrap our heads about what we've done with this and to help people read it, read the new version.
Yep, so Barbara. How? Would that be different? From what Bill has already sent out with his multi-colored coding?
Well, there won't be the multi-colors anymore. So. So all the. A, a, and we don't need the, we don't need those. Those are like for discussion, for legal review, uh, recommended changes. Those, those should go away. Because that's, we, we, that's part of what we've done with this. That this, this is like a little, um, I see it as an introduction to the new. You know, subdivision ordinance. Why it's new, what has changed? In it.
Okay.
And it, so it segues from helping us, you know, guiding us through the, the, the new changes. To what the reader needs to know. And, and the select board. Because they, they're the ones that are actually going to vote on this. Yeah, Norm.
Um, Barbara, I think that's a very good idea. And what struck me is maybe the. What you're really saying is they have to be informed of the changes and to expect anybody to go through this. You know, who doesn't make a living at it is, is a. It's really unfair. It's not good notice. So my suggestion would be for you to consider Dana and Bill, footnoting the current. Uh. The changes in, in the. Draft and the document we have before us. And then the agenda would be identified, would contain. An explanation of what each footnote is, so people can go immediately and know what's going on.
Um, I would, I would humbly, I would humbly. Um, submit that. I think what. I'm hearing. Can be achieved. By either. A, a strike through. In the original. And/or. The, um. New wording that is replacing that. Because that's what Bill has. Accessible.
Well, we, we're not going to give people, um, multiple versions of this. When it comes to a public hearing and, and to votes. So.
So, okay, help me then understand what it is if we don't want the old version. Compared to the new version.
Exactly.
Uh, how to simplify. Uh, for the public. What?
Uh, Bill, Bill.
Is happening.
Bill has been doing this. Uh, I think if you, uh, look at the permit tracking ordinance. He has a list. Of what was changed. And, and what is new. So he already has like, you already have, Bill, a process for this, right?
Yeah, he, he, yes. Uh, maybe I'm regretting I do, but. Ordinance. I did, I did do that because there were. They were minor and it was just like, if you're looking for them, here's the differences. To, to create, to create a list of changes. By, by section in this would be substantial.
It would be, it would be longer. Yes.
But I guess my question is, if someone, if we enact this, it goes in sixty days and then someone. Wants to file a subdivision on the day, the day this new one takes effect. Does it matter what the changes are?
No, no, it's, it, it doesn't matter, you know, as. In the document as it lives on from enactment. You're right, you know? Um, it's, it's, it's just something, it's some guidance for people to, when they're voting on it. For the public, when they're, when they're reading it, uh, they're not going to compare versions. They're just not. So it, and it could be the highlights of what was changed and what was taken out. Uh, not every, you know, not every, you know, uh, legal citation that was changed.
Yeah, right.
More like the highlights.
So Barbara, let me, um, let me suggest this because this is my thinking now. And if, if need be, I can probably do that because. That's what I was doing every time I was putting an agenda together. Uh, for our subcommittee meetings. Uh, if we're looking at just, um, a, uh, a one-page, maybe page and a half. Reference of, uh, what has changed. I think that that's achievable. With a half hour to forty-five minutes of work on my part. I can give it to Bill. He can look it over and tell me whether he likes it or not.
I think we can do that. That's.
Okay.
I got it. Okay, I'm, I'm good. We'll, we'll, we'll do that.
All right.
It's really comes down to the. It really comes down to the quality of the notice. And it seems to me this is, this is probably as important piece of regulation. As the town has.
Yeah.
And it's the one that is most involved. Uh, and involves the most people and most permits every year. So it seems to me that Barbara's on the right track and, you know. It, it's just telling people what we've done, so they understand it a little bit better. And don't have to dig through and, and be. And none of them will. So we'll have a more informed, theoretically, a more informed public that's going to use it. Uh. And I, I think, I think it's the right thing. And Dana, if you need some help with that.
Okay.
It, it could even. And, and I'm just thinking now, it could even be like an appendix. It doesn't have to be, uh, at the beginning like it is with the permit tracking ordinance. Uh, because it's going to take up more space. And, um, keep people from actually finding things in the ordinance that they're looking for. Um, so it could, you know, you could jump and, and just say it's, it's at the end. You could do it in footnotes. Um. Oh. Yeah.
I would suggest that it be a separate document because you don't want this included in the, um. In the, uh, the published, the final published version. So, uh, that can be a separate. Uh, uh. I don't know, compendium of changes or something like that, but, um, I, I think between Bill and. Norman and myself, we can get something for the next meeting.
And you know what else? Uh, this will come in really handy when we do the notice for this. Because that will be the stuff that we put in the paper. The warning. You know, this is change in the subdivision ordinance. This is why we're, we, we went into it and made changes. And so if we can get, get some sort of summary of those most important things. Uh, it would help with communicating what we did, uh, in person and also in print.
Okie dokie. We're on it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it will end, Dana. It will end.
May and Dana.
So I hope I'm not pulling us back into the weeds on this one, but I was just thinking after we talked to, um. Donovan last week about the subdivision and we talked about, um, overhead versus underground utilities. Um. Maybe we should, there's a, an allowance for shallow soils, but maybe we should add shallow soils, wetlands or flood plains.
That's in the waiver already. I don't know that we have to actually do anything to, uh, reference that since that's already. Uh, listed as part of the, um, the waiver. Is that correct, Bill? Uh, waiver, um. Options?
I think, I think it is. Yeah. I mean, I, I haven't gone back to look at like the forms.
Yep.
Because it's, we're not really relevant. I mean, the forms are going to change based upon.
Right, based on.
And, and Mary Beth, is, is that what you're asking? Or is that where you're trying to lead us? That this should or should not be a waiver?
Um, I think should because it makes sense to have them overhead. But I think the intent. Overall is that then people don't have to look at utility lines. Um, but I'm, I'm not sure, but so. Just looking at.
We are talking about, Mary Beth, you're talking about, uh, uh, um. Comparing aesthetics versus, uh, environmental impact. And so at some point in time, so there's some, there's got to be some regulatory body that is saying, you know, at this point, we're talking about environmental impact. Uh, outweighing aesthetics. And so we're going to go with a waiver that says that, uh, this is the best course of action, right?
Right. And it does say that, so under utility lines, it says that the planning commission may waive this requirement, but it says. In areas of extremely shallow soils, the planning commission may waive this requirement. Um, so I'm just saying, make it a little more clear. Maybe put or other environmental. Constraints. I don't know. It is, I can also just talk to you about it because that is very specific, but I was just thinking about it because we. It just came up in a recent meeting and.
Well, if you're making, if you're, if you're recommending a change, give us the reference.
Okay.
For right now.
Uh, four point zero six utilities.
Yep.
On eight forty is the line. On page twenty.
Could you repeat that?
Uh, four point zero six utilities. And here it's, uh, actually one, paragraph one, utility lines, uh, second, uh. Second line down in areas of extremely shallow soils. That's, that's the point that you're referring to, right, Mary Beth?
Yeah, because it says.
Or other.
Yeah. Well, because it says all lines shall, shall be placed underground. So it's like, well, we're requiring it. And then after that, it says in areas of extremely shallow soils. The planning.
Or other, other environmentally sensitive areas?
Exactly. Right. Yeah.
Or other environmentally sensitive. Sensitive areas. The planning commission may waive this requirement. That makes sense?
I like it.
Good touch.
Thought we were done, Bill, but, uh, apparently we've got one more. Did you get that or do you want me to send it to you? Okay.
I have, I have recorded for my charity.
Good thing you can't see Bill, Mary Beth.
Free marrying me.
I'm only kidding.
All right. Do, do you think that will cover it, Mary Beth?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Great.
This group is nothing but thorough.
I think it comes from the top.
Okay. Uh, so Barbara, back to you. Are, are there any other? Um, instructions that you would like to provide, uh, for the chair of this committee? Subcommittee? Before you take back the agenda?
Um, no.
Okay, it's all yours then.
Okay. Thank you again and again. For all the work.
All right.
Okay.
Well, thank you. Yep, you're welcome.
So, um, next on the agenda of, sent out some, uh, data about the river corridor. And that ordinance that, uh, we're considering and, and, uh, that we all. Will, um. In sometime soon, start doing some public outreach on, uh, but I thought it would be. It was interesting to me to actually put the addresses in and what type of buildings. So the, the, the first part, the first page, the parcels in the river corridor, those are, those are, um. Parcels that have structures. Um, with, that would be in this new river corridor. And then the, the second page is, uh, the, the structures that are in the, the small stream buffer. Uh, that's, um, most of the small streams. It's the lighter pink color on the map and. Um, it's, it's a fifty feet on each side of the, uh, the top of the bank of the river. The first.
Hang on a second. Am I not looking at the right thing?
This is the one she talked about first and flip over. That's the one that are in the buffer.
Uh, oh, because there's no color coding on it. Yeah, okay.
It's too different.
Yep. Right, okay. Yeah, forty-two parcels are in the, uh, river corridor and seven are in the, uh, stream buffer. Okay, yep. I was just confused by the colors that I didn't see.
Right, there weren't any colors to see.
I think she was talking about the. Over there.
Yes.
I'm just blind, not colorblind, sorry.
Yeah, so the river corridor is the think, the thicker pink. Uh, on the map and then the small streams, of course, would just be the little fingerlings.
I'm back with you.
I take the colorblind championship.
So I was surprised that there were as many, uh, businesses. Uh, within the river corridor and it looks like most of them are over on, uh, business for, for. So. In my mind, um, that does change our outreach a little bit, uh, I, I think in respect to. Uh, I, I think in respect to, it, it, we may need to. Uh, have some that's directed to residents and homes and what they want to do with sheds and that sort of thing. And with these businesses. Um, and what they might want to do for expansion. Uh, so out of the forty-two parcels, there were structures, excuse me, that are in the river corridor. Um, eighteen, I think, I think it's about eighteen are commercial or. Um, hydro or, or businesses. Uh, there's one lodging. So, um. If anybody has any insights on, you know, how we should proceed with that, what, what we can do, we can take this list and, and get the mailing addresses. For the owners. And send them a letter, send them a map. And indicate, you know. Give them some idea what a river corridor means. Give them a brief description.
Oh Barb?
And go from there, yeah.
This is the list that you were talking about that you wanted. Names, you know, we, we don't have this listing done, I don't believe. I don't think that was ever done. Um, I mean, it's easy enough to do, it's in the grand list and it can be pulled together and pulled out, but it's. Then, I, I don't think, I, I don't think I ever set anything up. In the past, so somebody would have to go through and, and pull these out and set it up.
Yeah.
It, it could be all set up so that, that you could just print a listing of all these, just automatically.
But yeah.
I don't believe it. I'll take a look, but I don't think it's been done.
Yeah, um. We might have done it for something else, Howard. I can't remember right offhand what it was.
When we were doing, uh, Muzzy, the Brooks, when we were doing the Brooks.
Oh, right.
That's when we did it because we did, we did some mailings at that time. And that's what I was thinking, no, that's. That was, but this here could be set up just as well and should be set up for.
And I don't think there's any addresses in here that are in that watershed, are there? I mean, most of these.
Right, no, I, I agree with you. Yeah, these are. Well. You know, Curtis Brook could see. Perkins Road perhaps. There could be something on Perkins Road. On the second page.
Yes, so what I'm thinking the next step is, is, is to get those addresses so we can, uh, mail and get letters ready. Uh, probably two different versions. One for residents. And one for businesses. And send those out. And just start raising awareness. About this and, and then, then set up, uh, a public meeting or two. Um, I, I, you know, there's some state facilities in here, so I didn't include those, but I did include the hydro. Um, and I think those will probably be exempt. The state, state ones are already permitted to be there. And most likely, uh, the, the federal facilities that, like GMP, hydro and all that. Have licenses to be there. What I don't know is if we have any say in, on how they. How they can develop. We, we may not, we, th- those may be exempt completely. We not, we may not be able to tell GMP that, no, you can't put another structure closer to the river. Because that's what they're doing. They're doing, uh, river hydro power. Yeah, Howard?
Barb, on one of them, you got zero Amanda Drive. What is that?
Yeah, see, uh, is that the small streams or no? Yeah, I remember that. Um.
Great.
I, so. Is, is, are there any other places? Are there, is there just one place on Amanda Drive? Is that?
Oh, there's, there's houses on Amanda Drive that are very close to the river there. Zero, zero Amanda.
Is there others other than zero? I don't have that actually.
I, I only see zero.
Zero.
It's all of those.
Well, I noticed. There's one up, the third one down on top.
Oh, one.
Third one down is one twenty-eight Amanda Drive.
Yeah, those, all those houses are, I would say within that zone.
Yeah.
There's another one, one eighty-four. How many houses are down there, Howard? Isn't it like five?
Way, way down the bottom, there's. There'll be four or five, perhaps that.
I see at least three on here.
Uh, where's Amanda Drive?
Oh, you're going up East Fisher Road. And if you're gonna. Go up to, uh, as you start going up, yeah, up in your neck of the woods where you, where you're trying to go up around Colonial. Estates or Colonial Drive, you just start up and it's a road that drops way down into the hole by.
Right, we've talked about that one, yeah. Right. Yeah, it's, it's right along the river.
Right down the river, yeah, but I just couldn't get what. There's an accessory building at zero Amanda, I don't know what that could be.
That, that could be it. I'll double check. These are, these came from E nine one, E nine one one. Um, information. So I think maybe they didn't put, um, a number to it because it was just. An accessory, uh, building. I think you're right. But I'll double check on that.
Unless this is the, the water, uh. There's, there's a water system up there that Colonial Estates had, which is. Not on Amanda Drive, but that's right down on the river. I don't know if that's, that sits right down. Certainly where it could be in the floodplain. I don't know.
Yeah, so looking at this, it's like, okay, we've got our work cut out for us because there are so many businesses listed here. So.
So, so Barbara, what is the, uh, what's the summary of tasks for, uh, this outreach?
So the next step would be for, um, me to get whatever Howard or the Lister's office needs. Um, to identify these parcels. And, you know, this, these two, these two columns in this table were just pulled out of a, a huge spreadsheet. So I could, I could send, um, the office the whole spreadsheet if that would help. Um, and then I don't think we can set a timetable, um, to get the information back. Um, because Howard is, is leaking and, um. You know, that, that they've got quite a workload as it is in there. So, um, I, I think we just have to wait till they can get this done. And then we can proceed.
What is it that they're getting done? Just putting the list together? That Howard was speaking about earlier?
Flag these accounts.
Yep.
Yep. Who gets the letters in each of these, the, the forty-two river corridor ones and the seven stream buffer ones?
I mean, who, who the individuals that will be addressed to?
The, the landowner. Who is the landowner for these parcels?
Yep.
And what is their, wha- what is their address? Yeah.
Yep.
I'm running out of time, I thought about this a week or so ago. Tomorrow's is it for me, so, uh, but somebody else can. Can do, it's an easy enough job to do, to just flag them all and set up an account.
Okay. Well, let, let's touch base, Howard, and, and how I should broach this with, with the office, the Lister's office and. What might get the best results?
That, that's where it should be done, you know, that's where normally would be done, in the Lister's office.
Yeah.
The Lister's grand list that they, you know, work with all the time, so it could easily go in and. And flag them all and set up, set it up so that you just push a button, print all of. Mailing addresses, you know, names and addresses and anything else you want.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So how, how long, Howard, do you think realistically, uh, that would take? So what is the ask that Barbara is?
To do this?
Yeah.
Oh. You know, a few hours basically is what it would take. And I'll see if I can, I'll see if I can. Uh, do something with this tomorrow, but. I don't, I won't have access to that room much longer, so it's, I'll see if I can get it done. Just, I'll bring lunch, yeah.
Do you want me to send you the spreadsheet, Howard?
No, I can work from the sheet we got right here is enough.
Okay.
This is, I'll just, I'll just go in the grand list and find. Find all of these and flag them.
Great.
Okay, okay. That'd be great, thank you.
So that, that's the first step. And then the second step would be, do we need to put, uh, information together or do you already have that, Barbara?
Um, I, we will need to put information together for how we're going to do. What's going to be in the letter, wha- what, what our message is. And what we're going to pull out of, you know, the river corridor. Regulation language and, um. You know, the reasons why, uh, this is beneficial, you know, the, the ecological reasons, the financial reasons. So that, that would be, so just getting that, letting those people know that they are the ones affected. Um, is the first step. And then, you know, our meetings, we could, we could talk to anyone who's interested. But I think we definitely need to let to know, let the people who have, who own the land in the corridor, in these small streams know. First.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, I'm thinking. I'm thinking, you know, there are a lot of commercial businesses here. That, you know, th- there's a chance they might be easier to work with than residents. Because, you know, because of the financial implications, if they did. You know, want to develop, put a structure closer to the Otter Creek in most cases here. Um, but that would, wouldn't be the best business decision. And, you know, I, I think there's, I, I think they could see that, whereas a property owner might be more like, well. Now, this is my land. You know, why are you telling me? You know, what I can do on it?
So you're suggesting that we would hold two separate meetings? Or no?
Well, maybe it's, maybe it might be too early to, to, um, make that decision right now, Dana, um, depending on. What kind of response we get from the letters. The letter could also say, you know, um. It could say something about, um, you know, there will, will be meetings coming up, or if you have any initial questions. You can contact. Blah, blah, blah. Yeah, the future meeting, we can work on that, that verbiage.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And thank you, Howard. That, that would be great. Sorry, I left it for your last day.
Well.
Okay, um, the, um. Next thing is the, uh, the Joint Energy Committee, that's the select board and the planning commission members who are sitting on that. Uh, met a couple of weeks ago. I think it's, I think it was since the last time we met. And, um, planned out some, um, activities for the townwide celebration. Um, that, uh, would be energy related, um, some, some vendors and some. Uh, people with tables with information. So we'll start publicizing that and al- also in the next circle, we'll have the results of the energy survey. Let everybody know, um. And there are some connections to what people said in that survey and, uh, what we're trying to do with the townwide celebration. And we're also trying to make some connections with the Rutland, with the school and see if we can get some students involved. With the celebration and, and the energy topic. And that pretty much covers that. Must, uh, Norm, do. You want to add anything? You sit on that committee?
You, you covered it.
Okay. Okay. So, um, in announcements, um, there's a new select board member who was, uh. Who was named, um. Tuesday night, Matt Geddy. He has been the town moderator last few years. Um, and he'll be sworn in. On the. On tomorrow?
Probably tomorrow.
Yeah. Any other announcements?
Uh, the four board members that were up were re, were, were reappointed.
The, the, uh, the, the four, uh, planning commissioners.
Or yes, yes.
Phew.
It was close.
Nail biter.
Didn't give us the result of the votes.
It was unanimous.
With a sigh of relief, I didn't have to find anybody else.
Right.
And it was interesting, there was, it, the, the, the open select board seat, even though there wasn't much notice, there, it was competitive. There were, what, three candidates, Bill?
At one point there were five, then it got down to four.
Oh. And, and so, yeah, so Matt Geddy will now have, will now have to run in the special election in May. There's a special election to take care of the shortage in the new, um, public safety building. Uh, there's, there's, uh, the expenses and everything were higher than anticipated. So they need to put an item on the ballot to make up for that. Uh, overage. Uh, and, and there may, may be some accounting, just internal accounting that's done. So that taxpayers will not really have to foot much of a bill at all. Uh, but they, they do need to be put on notice and correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, that what was approved. Two years ago, uh, was not enough.
Yeah, so the, it's prop, they're, they're looking at a plan where there's not going to need to increase the amount of money we borrow. But the ballot question initially capped the project expense, they need permission to raise the project expense, even though it probably won't kind of borrow any more money.
So that, that initiated the special election in May. Um, and, and then these openings came. And so, uh, Matt Geddy will be. Running, most likely, we, we don't know, uh, he and other candidates, um. Need to get, uh, signatures to get on the ballot. For that seat. So the seat essentially opens up again. Uh, for that election.
Right.
Kind of complicated, but. But that would be, and, and that's just filling out Don Choffee's term, right, Bill?
Correct, yeah, he'll be up again, and then he'll be up again in March.
Okay. Any takers? So. So, uh, any other announcements? Okay, let's head down to the minutes. March ninth.
Move to approve the minutes for March ninth.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I think they were concise and accurate.
I, I didn't find any. Anything that's common or. Will change.
Norm, I think you finally have Bill trained. Is that what you're saying?
I wouldn't think of such a thing.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor of the minutes, as Bill has so expertly put together, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Unanimous, Bill, wow.
Please put in there expertly.
Okay, anything else you can? Yeah, go, go ahead.
I was just gonna motion to adjourn if there's nothing else.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you, we're adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thanks.